Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 26 Town Council Committee of the Whole. All councilors present, with the exception of Councilors Heed and Schmidt, who are out of town, and Councilor Parker is running a few minutes late. Calendar and Communications, I just wanted to start off with an update on some referrals that we've had. We have three referrals. Two of them are scheduled for December 10th. One is on the dual-language ballots. The short-term rentals is not scheduled yet. We are probably going to hold off until later in the month of December on that one. And Mr. Burt is going to give us a quick update right now on the responsible contractor ordinance that he and Councilor Baumgartner have been working on for several months now.
Well, if you recall, we had looked at one several months ago, and then it didn't go anywhere at that point. We had a meeting with Jason LaBelle on November 6. Jason, along with a lot of our staff and Councilor Baumgartner. Jason is working with Councilor Baumgartner on updating it, by understanding, on the ordinance to reflect what we discussed at that meeting. So I'm just, at this point, waiting for something from Jason. It'll have to be reviewed by attorney before I bring it here, but as soon as I get it, we'll get it reviewed and bring it.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll go through, Councilors. Councilor Baumgartner?
Just, it's a point of inquiry. Will there be an opportunity to, will we have wards or recognitions tonight on the agenda?
This evening, they're not on the agenda, but we could add them in for the council agenda, because I don't think that's set yet, correct? Mr. Burt?
Certainly do it under other business.
It's normally on there anyhow. I'm sorry?
Certainly do it under other business.
Tonight, if you had something this evening, if you were referring to a counselor who will not be with us next term, there is something, yes, we can discuss that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Council Franko?
I have nothing to report.
Council Obrey?
Shopping.
Shopping?
That's all I've been doing.
Okay. Council Bordelon?
This is for under calendar and communications.
Yes.
So, just attended, well, you guys attended. Attended the Westside Middle School trivia night.
Oh, yes, I did.
With Councilor Franko, but she was there. That was at the Elks Club. It was a fundraiser to help primarily with the eighth grade graduation and other activities. A lot of fun, a lot of great raffles, pretty well attended. They had every table booked. Also, Mayor Granatowski was also there. Also attended another fundraiser at the Elks Club. It was a weekend at the Elks Club. They were doing a fundraiser for the local cancer center, Smilow Cancer Center in Waterford. It was pretty heavily attended, and all proceeds were going and staying local, which is wonderful. I also attended a Board of Ed meeting as well.
Councilors Perry?
No report.
Okay, so back to me again. We have communication received from the widow of a fallen police officer who was asking about some tax information. She's relocating from the city of Groton to the town of Groton, and she is asking us to look into the waiving of property taxes. The town currently does not have an ordinance to waive property taxes. The state of Connecticut permits towns to have such an ordinance, so that's something that we're going to need to talk about and see what you would like to do with that, so we can have that on an agenda probably later in December as well. And the other thing is, I sent out, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to mention, we only have one meeting in December, and it's getting awfully full, so some things might go to January.
That's right. That's right. The 12-10 is our only cow?
Yes.
Okay, I misspoke then, yes. So then it would be probably the cow in January then for the short-term rentals and the surviving spouse topics. The other thing, I just would like everybody to take a look at the manager's review form. It's that time of year again where we have to do the manager's review, and I forwarded last year's form to everybody, so if you can just take a look at it and see if there's anything you wanted to change on it, we could have a discussion about that at some point as well. And I think that's it. Oh, one other thing. Council Obrey, congratulations. She was honored for lifetime achievements in her professional field, so congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Burt, did you have anything else you wanted to address?
Just to mention that the community center, new water lines are underway there. They started last week running the new line, because we have a lead issue there, as you're all aware of. It'll take about six weeks, though, to be completed, mostly due to the lead time on the drinking fountains to get those in stock, but hopefully should be done soon, though, hopefully. Other than that, I did, for the dual-ballot language ballot, I did invite the registrars and the town clerk to that meeting.
Council Bordelon?
Yes. In regards to the water lines, because I remember that was one of the issues when we converted over from a, just an existing building and wanting it to be more of a wreck building and bringing that up to have that checked. So this will allow the areas that are operational to be lead-free, or this, be looking at the whole building, or that would have to be re-looked at as we move?
Greg, do you happen to know, offhand?
We'll take your whole building.
Okay. And so the lead issue was coming from an exterior source, or what was determined on that?
I know there's two different, we're going to switch to a different, off a different road for where it's, well, we have Greg come up, so.
Mr. Hanover, if you could come up, please. That way we can capture it for the people watching at home.
And this is Greg Hanover. He's the interim Public Works Director.
All right.
Yeah, there's two water services that service the building now. One's off Depot Road, one's off Route 1. We're going to be closing off the one that comes off Depot Road, which is what we call the D-Wing. That's the old elementary school. That area has some really old pipes in it, and we think that that's where it's coming out. And the drinking fountains themselves often have lead in them, so we're just replacing all those, you know, with new ADA drinking fountains.
Thank you.
And is there anything else? All right, very good. On to approval of the minutes. Council Baumgartner, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of November 12, 2019. So moved.
Second. Moved by Baumgartner and seconded.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I have a question. Can I go back to what we were talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's been moved and seconded. Let's do this, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Let me write down here, so that, if you don't mind, Mr. Hanover, if you could just hold on for one minute, please.
Sure.
Thank you. So that was moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon?
That's right.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the November 12 minutes?
There is, no, never mind.
You're good? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of 2019-745, November 12, 2019 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We're at six. And Council Franko, would you move 2019-748, please?
Make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole special meeting minutes of November 19, 2019. So I assume.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Perry. Any questions or discussion on the November 19 minutes? These are rather short. Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-748 special meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Very good. So we are on to Council Obrey's question for Mr. Hanover.
Sorry, just a quick question. So who's going to be doing the Wi-Fi? Did I hear you say the Wi-Fi was going to be going into the building?
Well, Public Works just, this week, installed the conduit from Town Hall over to the community center, so that our IT department can contract with a vendor to pull the wire over, fiber optic over, so we'll have Wi-Fi over there.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure our contractors picked out yet.
All right. I was just going to mention that one evening, when we were down there, there was a gentleman there from Thames Valley who said that they, that the building was wired for Wi-Fi, and I just thought that maybe in your selection, you might want to at least talk to them. He said he installed it, so I assume he's correct in what he's telling me, and said that it was there and that it should be suitable for use again, but I know how much things change, so maybe it won't, but it's.
I'll check into it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And thank you for stepping up to do a new job.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to 5A, 2019-699. This is the appointing town of Groton tree warden on page 13. Council Obrey?
Motion to recommend a resolution appointing Steve Post as the town of Groton tree warden. I so move.
Second. Moved by Obrey and seconded by Franco. Did you want Mr. Hanover to speak to this, or do you want to?
Yeah. You know, after Gary Schneider, the former Public Works Director, retired a few weeks ago, he was also the town tree warden. We kind of, we're in a situation where we needed a tree warden fairly quickly. I reached out to some arborists and also the surrounding towns and city, Stonington, Ledger, to ask if they could fill in. They were willing to do it for, you know, it was a cost to the town to do that, but that would have been a short-term solution until we found somebody internally that works for the town. I also talked to Steve Post, who is the Roads and Streets Supervisor, who works for me directly, and he was interested in performing these duties, so, you know, I talked to him some more, and he agreed that he would do them. So, you know, I told John, the town manager, that, you know, Steve would be a good candidate for that, because he actually had worked with Gary quite a bit when Gary was doing his tree warden duties, and Steve has been here for years and years, so I would recommend that Steve, you know, be the town tree warden. State statutes do allow him to be the tree warden for up to a year until he has to take the required courses and an exam, which are offered, you know, in the fall, and he has agreed to do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Hanover on this? Council Bordelon and Perry?
Was there any initiative to check with the city to see who they use for their tree warden?
Yeah, we did look into that. I feel this is a better fit.
Okay. So there's no option to collaborate at all, to do any joint efforts?
Well, you would just pay that person and do it. It's a different style than what we do. I should say they have a larger budget and do more tree cuttings than we do.
And the other question, you said that Mr. Post needs to attend a class, so he's not certified currently?
Correct.
Okay. And the class starts, you said, October, and what's the length of this program?
It's six classes. It runs September through November, and then there's an exam at the end of it in November.
And is that something the town is paying for, or is this something that he?
Yeah, it'd be a part of his official duties.
Okay. All right. So upon completion of that, then, in November, he officially will take the position, or will he start sooner?
He could start right away, and the state statutes allow up to one year for him to pass the exam.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Councils of Perry and then Baumgartner?
He's already an employee of the town.
Correct.
Will he be paid extra for this job?
I haven't discussed that with him or the town manager.
Well, I'm concerned about it. You know, if he's going to be paid as a tree warden by the hour during the same time he's working for the town and already being paid, I think that, I think there's a problem there. If it's an additional duty that we're going to give him, and he's willing to accept it without additional pay, then I think it's great that he'd do that. But if he's not going to be, if it means additional pay, well, he's already getting paid, and so he'd get paid twice for the hours that he works as a tree warden, and I don't think that makes us good stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Councils of Perry, Mr. Burt wanted to jump in.
I definitely want him to not be paid per hour for that. The only thing I could see, is that a union position?
He is, and he has to be a union.
The only thing I could see is if, for some reason, the union said that that was an increased, I don't see that being above what he's doing, so I doubt there'd be anything. If there was, it'd be very small. It would be driven, I would think, I would think he could incorporate it, if he was willing to do that.
Yes.
We'll figure it out. I'm not anticipating a cost to it. Can't swear to it if the union said this is an increased duty, but I'm not anticipating it.
When this was first proposed to us, it was something like $7,000 a year, and it was only a few hours a week work. Am I correct?
Well, that was also including, we contract out with an arborist, well, we hire an arborist, he comes up about four times, a few times a year.
Few times a year.
That was to do both the tree warden and, they would also do, if we had someone else, they'd do arborist duties also.
But we don't know at this point whether or not he'll be getting additional pay to what he's already getting. Is that right?
Right. If there was any, I don't think there will be. If there was, it'd be very little.
Thank you.
Council Baumgartner?
What assurances can be given to the public that the new warden won't kind of cut trees indiscriminately? You know, I know there's been issues in many towns that, you know, have had wardens that have approved the removal of trees that are not diseased or dying, so just for the purposes of the public, can you give any assurances that, you know, he?
Well, I mean, I've worked with Steve for 31 years, and he is not one that's going to go around just cutting down trees for the sake of it. And all trees that are going to be removed or trimmed do have to be tagged for a 10-day period, and somebody can request a public hearing if they object to it. You know, as the town manager said, there are occasions, maybe three or four times a year, when a tree's health is in question, and we will call an arborist or an expert to render their opinion, and then, you know, the tree warden will make a decision then. But I can say that Steve is not going to be the kind of person that's going to go around cutting trees down.
Because I know sometimes, even in dealing with the utility companies, there can be a little bit of a tassel back and forth, so, you know, there's probably, you know, very few ways to sequester carbon better than, you know, keeping our roadside trees, so thank you for that.
And part of his duties is to, you know, plant new trees, too, where we can.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Do, we have councilors that wish to speak twice. Does Council Franko or Obrey wish to speak? Council Franko? So is the training, is there a cost for training?
Yeah, it's, I believe, $350.
Oh, okay. And was Mr. Schneider, did he have an increase in pay for doing that position?
No.
No?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Council Bordelon and Perry?
I was just asking, stemming off of Counselor Baumgartner, in regards to the tree removal, which I just encourage that we look to, as you stated, replant any areas that we can do such in appropriate manner. I just think it's good housekeeping for the town, you know, as things come down, really look at ways and initiatives to put other structures back in those places to help the environment, so.
Councils of Perry?
I'm familiar with this, there's issue from another town, but I'd like to know what our policy is. If a tree on public property, on Groton town property, falls onto private property, does the town take the responsibility for removing that tree?
Yes.
Okay. And if it does damage in the course of that fall, will the town repair the damage it does?
Yeah, we would refer to our insurance company.
Okay. But you would, you would, it would be something that's covered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
Sure. If the tree falls on somebody's property, do you hear it?
We hear the person's property fell on, yes.
Yeah, you sure will.
Sorry.
That's all right. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-699, appointing town of Groton tree warden, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 5B, 2019-747, CIP replacement sidewalk construction reappraisal on page 16. There's a draft motion on page 17. Council Bordelon?
On page 17?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry. A motion to recommend a resolution approving the town council to authorize a reappraisal of $20,000 from FYE 2020 CIP 3B, replacement sidewalk construction, FYE 2020 CIP 4E, park improvement, ADA compliance, reducing CIP 3B from $182,000 to $162,000, and increasing CIP 4E from $48,000 to $68,000, and to refer the matter to the RTM. I so move.
Second. Moved by Bordelon and seconded by Franco. Before we start, does this need to go in an expedited fashion?
No.
Okay, very good.
I don't think so.
No, we wouldn't be doing the work, the proposed work until the spring.
Okay. Do you want to start, Mr. Barry?
Sure. So I'm here this evening to propose the reappraisal of some money in the 2020 CIP, moving it from the replacement sidewalk construction to CIP projects for the Parks and Recreation Department. So in this fiscal year, there was $182,000 appropriated for replacement sidewalk construction. $55,000 of that was allotted for engineering and permitting at the intersection of Pumpkin Hill Road and 184. There's been an issue, an ongoing issue, by the entrance to the Haley Brook condominiums of the sidewalk is, water is coming off of the street and has washed under the sidewalk. And the town had planned on doing the engineering and permitting for that. The state is currently working on a project there, doing new signaling, and at that time, and I believe it was tied into that project, the state decided that they were going to go ahead and deal with that issue. So that essentially left $55,000 that the town didn't need to spend on that particular project. At the same time, the Parks and Recreation Department has been working on a couple of projects that were in the CIP. One of those was Deerfield, a basketball court in the Deerfield development, and the other one was a basketball court in the Tanglewood development. The basketball court in Deerfield, I got an estimate last year for $9,700. So I put into the CIP, which was approved, $10,000. When we went out to bid this summer, we had one bidder, and the bid was for $22,000, and it was the same gentleman that had given me an estimate nine months previous, or six months previous. So I contacted him, and I said, you know, you went from $9,800 to $22,000. Please explain. And he said that one of his major competitors had gone out of business. He had picked up a number of projects and was, his guys are working 70 hours a week, they're working overtime, and he just can't keep up with the work, so it kind of came down to supply and demand. So the purchasing agent and I reached out to a number of different firms that do this kind of work. We called places in Massachusetts, places in Rhode Island, had a couple come up and look at the project. We rebid it, and again, only had one bidder, and this time he had knocked off a couple thousand dollars, so it's down to $20,000. So that's one project. The other project is Tanglewood Park. Now, a number of years ago, I had proposed that we replace that entire basketball court because it's, there's serious cracking all throughout the, all throughout the court. The project was not approved for two or three years, so I went back and I said, okay, well, we'll look at patching it, and I got a proposal to patch it, and that came to $18,000. And as we were going through the budget process last year, someone said, well, that's asinine that we're going to spend $18,000 just to patch it when we can spend 25 to get a new court. And I said, well, I agree, but, so at that time, the town manager was directed to try to find money in the budget to cover the difference between just patching and replacing. So I'm taking what I see as an opportunity now to take, to reappropriate some of the money from the sidewalk project to cover the costs of both replacing the Deerfield basketball court and making repairs to the Tanglewood court. So that's kind of where we're at, and I asked Greg to stay in case there was any kind of engineering-related questions.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Council Franko?
So on the Tanglewood Park?
Yes.
Did you, again, put it out to bid?
No. That actually is going to be done by Public Works. They're going to tear it up. They have done similar work. They did, they replaced the tennis courts and the basketball courts at Farquhar probably six or seven years ago, and so I've talked to, I talked to Gary and talked to Greg, and both were in agreement that that was something that the Public Works could do, but it's something that won't, they won't do to other previously scheduled work. They won't be able to get to the, replace the Tanglewood playground until the fall of 2020.
And so you're asking for how much more money on this one?
$10,000.
But the difference, well, the CIP was for 18, and that was given to them, and you're asking for, it's now $25,000? That's like seven, or are you just?
Yes. Well, I, there's a little bit extra, just, I mean, it's a year away, and it's difficult to know what exactly, what additional expenses there may be, if we have to replace the backboards or something like that.
Okay.
And it would also include, you know, restriping, restriping the court, and if money allowed, putting, painting the surface, just to kind of protect the investment.
Okay. And would Public Works be able to do Deerfield?
No, that's, Deerfield is just patching, and that's not something that, because there's a mesh product that they use to cover over the cracks, you know, they clean the cracks out, they fill them, and then they put a mesh product over it, and then you seal that, and that's not something that the Public Works could do.
Are both of the courts the same type of court?
They're both basketball courts, yes.
But the same type of material? Because I'm, maybe I'm just a little confused, because if Deerfield can be done for $20,000, right?
Right. That's patching?
By patching.
That's not tearing up.
Right.
That's patching and painting. Right, so.
And Tanglewood is going to be?
And Tanglewood is tearing it out and purchasing the pavement to put down an entire new court.
For 25, right?
Yes, yeah.
So for $5,000, we could have a brand-new one at Deerfield as well, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but there wouldn't be any sense to tear the one up at Deerfield. It's not in the condition that Tanglewood is.
Do you think Deerfield could wait until maybe other contractors may be interested?
Yeah, I mean, our plan is to go out to bid. If the money was appropriated, would be to go back out to bid for springtime work, and we're hoping that, you know, in the spring, there'll be more bidders for the work.
I just want to clarify, because I was, as you were asking the questions, I was running this in my head as well. So Deerfield is not in as bad a shape as Tanglewood, therefore it's worth patching?
That is correct. It is, yeah. They're, the cracks in Deerfield are much narrower, they're not nearly as extensive, but, you know, the patching, the cost of patching and putting the fabric down and then painting the court comes to about $20,000.
Mr. Burt?
What would the lifespan on the patching job be compared to putting in a new court? How long would each last?
I think the warranty for the patching is maybe five years, but, you know, if you paint over it and you continue to, kind of like you do your driveway, you know, if you seal it, that will continue to protect, you know, the work that's being done.
What's the warranty on a new court?
I don't know. Greg, if you pay, what's the warranty?
Of course, if you do, how long would you expect, if you guys did it, that?
Well, I can tell you that the work that they did at Farquhar probably six or seven years ago, I mean, the courts are in excellent shape, and even the contractors have commented on what a good job that they did.
Councils of Perry?
The money is supposedly, was supposedly appropriated, the sidewalk repair, I guess, on Pumpkin Hill Road?
Yes.
Is that a state road?
Well, the sidewalk on 184 is, 184 is a state road, and the sidewalk is on 184.
So the sidewalk that we were going to repair was on 184?
Yes.
And that's a state responsibility?
No. No, the top, the part that we had to repair was not, was put in as part of a subdivision approval through a town process. However, the work they needed to do included replacing the sidewalk, that was their portion. And they couldn't do it without, with our portion messed up underneath with the undercutting. So they're picking up our portion. But it was our responsibility, we did look into it, and it was our responsibility.
Okay, this wasn't foreseeable at the time we appropriated this money?
No, not at all. It just came to be in the last couple of months.
Okay, I have a little bit of a problem with this request in that the $182,000 is not found money. It's not something that we saw on the street, nobody was using it. It is something that came from the taxpayers. And it came from the taxpayers at a rate, if we're a population of 40,000 people, then it came from the taxpayers at a rate of over $4 for every man, woman, and baby in the town. And now we're diverting it from what it was originally appropriated for to something else. There should be a way, that the way to get it back to the taxpayers would be to leave it in our surplus fund and then take that, the part of the surplus fund that is over 15 million, or 15% of our budget, pardon me, and reduce the taxes for next year on that basis. These things, these repairs of these basketball courts should be done. But I think it should be done as part of a budget process. It should be part of the budget that you submit for the spring consideration. But just because $182,000 wasn't used for what it was appropriated for is not a good reason to go and say, okay, we can take that and use it for something else, and it doesn't count. It counts. It counts as against the taxpayers. And that's why I'm concerned about this. We should maintain our parks and recreation facilities in top-notch shape. That's our responsibility. But I don't like the way this is being done.
Mr. Burt?
I really see them as different issues. The 184, as I mentioned, we just learned that we were going to get that money back. That's going back into the CIP surplus no matter what. It's really a totally separate issue. They came to me, RTM asked us to look into the one basketball court. They say, let's try to do it the right way. So when the other one came in over budget for the bid, Mark came to me, hey, can we find money somewhere to do these others? Like, I think there's money in the CIP, in the capital improvement projects fund, because we already had one that's closing out. They were two totally separate, that money could have came from anywhere. It could have been contingency, anything else. So that was really just going to go away no matter what. I'm just trying to identify where we could take some money from.
Yeah, we could take the money from that. But we shouldn't, because it's not just sitting there with no purpose. It was money that was taken for a purpose, and since it wasn't used for that purpose, it should be returned to the general fund so that future taxes will be less... If we appropriate the money at the time of a budget consideration as part of a whole budget, I think we have a better opportunity to look at what we're spending.
I'm trying to kind of say this. You know, it goes back to the CIP automatically. And no matter what, we're going to end up, have to come up with more money anyways. We know that we're going to have a large amount of CIPs this year. You're going to pass that money on to the public anyways, so you're really not getting it back to the public one way or another. I mean, there's not a real, one way or another, this offsets CIPs we're likely to do. We have had quite a few complaints, I know, at least on one of these courts.
The ones in Deerfield.
Right, so I don't see pushing it off longer, and bids go up too. You know, it's something I think we should try to take care of. RTM asked us to take care of the one, to see if we could do it the right way, so that's why we're here.
Councilor Brown-Gardner?
If I'm correct, both, both projects, so the projects at Deerfield and Tanglewood Park were, the council approved those CIP items in the previous budget session?
Correct.
And so the issue at hand is that there are overruns as a result of the bids coming back to the town. So that's largely out of the control of this council.
Yes.
So if, because of the, because the bids were short, if we were not to move forward with actually paying for the project and for those overruns, then the project wouldn't take place, correct?
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, it just, it seems to me it would make sense that we would move forward with this, largely since we already did approve it, it was an approved item. And again, the overruns are largely out of our control. And there will be room in, you know, within the CIP budget as a result of funds not being expended by the town. So, you know, I'm with you, Councilor Zepari, on, you know, the need to, you know, demand fiscal responsibility. But I, I think for, in this case, it, I think it's all right, considering we have already approved it and we won't be expending funds in those other areas.
And if I could, sorry, if I could just add one thing. The advantage of knowing that the money is available now is we can go out to bid earlier. If we have to go through the budget process, we won't know if we're going to have that money until sometime in May. And at that point, a lot of the summer work has already been bid out and scheduled. So we would be looking at pushing this project off, the work at, certainly the work at Deerfield, off until sometime in the fall. So it just, it puts us in a somewhat better advantage, being able to bid the project this winter, scheduling this work for the coming spring versus having to wait and bid it in the summer and waiting until the fall.
And then I just wanted to add that if the money is in the CIP and it's not used, so this, there's this $55,000 that's not going to be used because we don't have to do the sidewalk, that money sits there until the CIP is closed out. So that could be potentially a couple of years?
Well, I mean, they automatically close out after five years. However, I'm trying to get people in the habit of, I just actually went to the departments, I'm closing them, I close things out as soon as I know they can be closed out.
Right. So then, so then this one...
I want to know how much money is out there.
Right, and that's good. But regardless, we would not have the money right away anyhow. It would be tied up in the capital reserve fund until the CIP was closed out. So we would be waiting, and that would push us back into the next budget cycle, as Mr. Berry said. Councilor Overy?
I just want to say probably about the same thing. I think we have the money, we're accounting for where it's going to go, and I think getting the bids out now is a lot better in the wintertime than it is in the spring. Might do a little better with some of these people. One question I have is, when you put out a bid like that, is it just in the local paper, or does it go online? Or how much of our audience are we getting our bids to?
I know it gets posted on the town website, and I'm, I'm not sure if there's also a state website that the purchasing agent directs, is there, yeah, so there's a state website also.
Is there a bidders list too? I think there's often a bidders list too, where you know people have signed up to receive bids. You would send them targeted also.
And that's actually one of the things that, I think I mentioned this earlier, is we, you know, kind of went through and contacted businesses that do this type of work. And we reached out to ones in Rhode Island and to Massachusetts also. So we did, we really made a good faith effort to try to get as many bidders as possible.
I'm wondering if some kind of a relationship with the Builders Association might bring in some new interests when we're bidding. Now, just to...
Open every idea.
Yeah.
I beg your pardon?
We're open to every idea.
Okay, well, my idea is. But they're very easy to work with, and we may pick up some new contractor that way versus somebody that's large and known. Thank you.
Councilor Franco, I'm going to go to Councilor Boardland, because she hasn't spoken on this yet.
So I'm just looking at this, and I think it's important, because this was already allocated, and we kind of told the people we were going to do it, and the taxpayers already allocated money. And, you know, like you said, they've paid them out, but yet we found that positive return, which is wonderful. My questions come in where the difference of patching versus just redoing. So my recommendation or thought or hope would be that, as we go out for new bids, would be to weigh both options and throw both on the table when speaking to them and ask the questions of, you know, repaving versus filling, patching. Because sometimes that number can change year to year. Just as you stated, I mean, it went up significantly from 9,000 to... So sometimes they're willing to work with you, and it depends on who you contact in the workflow. So I just don't want to close the mine to only patching, because when we go to bid this next year, this number could be closer to what we're looking at to just redo the whole thing. So I just would like to keep that, you know, kind of being proactive versus reactive on that. And, and the other, the other court, we're going to do ourself, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, yes.
And is there a reason why, then, we would want to just do the other one ourself and resurface the whole thing? And make ourself come in under budget?
Well, I hadn't talked to Greg about resurfacing, or, no, I'm sorry, about rebuilding the one at Deerfield. It, in my opinion, it wasn't in as bad a shape as the one at Tanglewood. I mean, the one at Tanglewood is terrible, and should have been done years ago. The one at Deerfield, there aren't as many cracks, they aren't as wide, you know. Pretend, I thought that patching it and painting it could be the preferred alternative, but I can, we can certainly look at tearing it out and redoing that one also.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to, once again, look internally first. Sometimes we get in that tunnel vision where we look at like what the paper says and what we approved, and maybe looking outside the box a little bit and thinking, you know, if we're able to do it internally and resurface the whole thing, do I want a patched or do I want a full paint job? You know what I mean? And time and looking at the extension of the life on that. I think it would make sense to start with Tanglewood obviously first, get that one rectified, maybe start talking about bids with people about patching or resurfacing, because that number could be the same. But also looking internally to what we can do as a town to rectify that ourself and maybe use the means in which we've already allocated in our own town with our own workforce and try to handle that internally. If we have the capabilities, it's unfortunate that Tanglewood has sat so long already if we've had that capability. So that's another concern. So I would like to just leave this more as an open mind. I'm not sure how it could be rewritten, or does it have to be rewritten? But maybe there's more research to be done. Maybe you should come back with maybe some more information to see if we can do this internally. You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I just think we can do some, maybe more research is all, just for the benefit of the town, of the actual surface, because the life on it and the taxpayer.
Mr. Burt, in reading the motion, I'm not seeing anything in the motion that would preclude Mr. Berry from changing what they do with Deerfield if they decided it was more cost-effective and made more sense to do a full rebuild like they were going to do at Tanglewood, correct?
Correct, and we also wrote it so that if one ended up coming in less than we thought it would, and the other more, we'd have a little flexibility there, so...
So then if, I think Mr. Berry's hearing that we would, from a couple of councilors, that we would like you to consider it would be more cost-effective to totally rebuild Deerfield just as Tanglewood would. So we can go ahead with this, and you have, that leaves you the flexibility to do as you see fit, given what we've said to you. Thank you. Councilor Franco?
Just coming off of what you've said, I think we would need to appropriate another 5,000 though, if, to weigh the two, wouldn't it?
20 and 20?
Well, one's 20, one's 25.
We've got, is it 25 or is it 20?
Tanglewood for a redoing is 25, and Deerfield is 20.
They may be different sizes.
We need to see a pro forma.
Well, what I'm saying, Deerfield Park is right now scheduled at 20,000 for a repair. And Tanglewood Park is scheduled for 25,000 for a whole repave. So we would have to add another 5,000 to give him the room to make the choice.
How much do you have in there already in the Tanglewood one?
18.
18?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct, 18.
And it's coming in at 25?
Right.
That was the estimate, yes.
So seven, and we're looking at 20. Mr. Burt, do you, what's your, what's your gut on this? Do you want to just leave it as it is and it necessarily come back?
I mean, it'd be great to have that flexibility. And like I said, we're now closing these things out as soon as they're done. So as soon as they're done, we'll close out and move the money back, anything that may be left over.
So...
I can make a motion if you'd like.
If you could, do you have...
But can I have one more question, though?
Yeah.
I still have a question.
So what type of, so I, this isn't just any asphalt company can come in and pave these? Is that what you're saying? There's special fibers in there, is that what you're, you were saying?
The patching is...
No, just the courts. Like, if you were going to do them brand-new, is it special?
Yeah, if we're going to do it brand-new, no, there's nothing special, you know, but that's something that can be done internally. Public Works has done that for us in the past, and that was the direction that we wanted to go with the project at Tanglewood.
And something that had just come to mind is, we're doing like the middle school, and I know that there is going to be an enormous amount of paving with companies coming in there. And maybe they'd be willing to also pick up smaller jobs within the town as well. Have you by any chance checked with them, who the contractors are?
No, we, we weren't looking at bidding out repaving. We were doing that internally. I mean, that's something we could certainly look at. I think it's going to be more expensive to go outside to have it paved versus doing it internally. But we could certainly get a quote to have somebody repave that and look at the costs associated with the town doing it.
Well, you do whatever. If we give you the funding, I think, like the mayor had said, it would be at your discretion possibly.
So I'm not sure, I'm just going to say something out loud. If you could write what you were thinking, then we could see if it matches. And if you don't mind, just listening closely to see if I mess it up or not.
I always listen closely.
So the 20,000, just as Councilor Franco is writing her amendment, the 20,000 in the motion would need to go to 25?
Correct.
And the 68 would need to go to 73?
Correct.
Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. So while you're doing that, I'll come back, so I'll go to Councilor Boardland and come back. Councilor Boardland?
I just also am curious, so it would make sense to me possibly that there'd be some cost savings if we decided to resurface two courts?
If we did them internally, that number might not need to go 5,000 more. It's kind of one of those things, apples and oranges, where if you're going to paint two cars on the same day and you already got the spray gun, you know what I mean? So I'm just wondering, there might be some cost savings, is what the reason I was bringing that up. Not necessarily to add an additional. So I'm fine with the wiggle room there, but I think it'd be great to have someone report back as soon as we have a finalization and an update on this, just to see where it comes out as a direction as to if we're going to patch, resurface, and who. That way, you know, it's great to kind of see the progression here and have that report. Because I just would think that there'd be a cost savings if you're going to do two courts roughly around the same time, starting with Tanglewood and moving to the next court. But once again, I just can't see allocating to an outside source that much money for just patching. It just, if we can do a whole court internally. And I think, I can't speak for everybody else, but I would think that if it took an extra year to get a fully resurfaced court versus a patched court for less money possibly and done internally, people would be happy. But I'd just like to see what direction you guys figure out.
Does Councilor Zepari or Overy wish to speak again, or Councilor Brown-Gardner?
Councilor Franco, did you wish to amend?
Yeah. Do I have to change all the numbers?
I think you're only changing two, that's what I was asking, Mr. Burt. I think you just need to read it with the 20 changed to 25 and the 68 changed to 73.
What about the 162?
Reducing it from...
162 to 157?
182 to... Yeah, you're right.
157?
You're right, yeah. So that's all, that's all the places that we need to adjust, I think. So you're bumping the one up to 25?
Increasing CIP.
Increasing the full CIP, or no, reducing the CIP to 157 and increasing the basketball one to 73.
We need to go through the numbers.
Another thing, we're just going to close that 55,000 all the way out of there, so that, you know, we can, instead of 20, you know, you should probably reduce that by 5,000 for the 3B. But you can also reduce it by 55. Either way, we're going to close, you know, take out that 55.
What is easier for the paper trail, would you prefer?
I'd say just, if you are going to tie it together, then the change of 182,000, or 162,000 to 157.
That's what I have.
162 to 157. So do you want to read it, and then if, so, Councilor Franco?
So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to recommend a resolution approving the town council to authorize the reappropriation of 25,000 from FYE 2020 CIP 3B replacement sidewalk construction to FYE 2020 CIP 4E park improvements ADA compliance, reducing CIP 3B from 182,000 to 157,000 and increasing CIP 4E from 48,000 to 73,000. 3B from 182,000 to 157,000 and increasing CIP 4E from 48,000 to 73,000, and to refer the matter to the RTM. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Overy. Mr. Burt, does that work?
It works.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amended amendment? Counsel Boardland?
Um, once again, just making sure we get a report. Um, sometimes these CIPs get lost and we're about to, you know, next, go into the next budget. It would be nice just to know and have, maybe that can be part of the motion and when, when the time comes, we'll report as to, not trying to control the situation, but trying to be informed to the situation as to what the direction this has moved in, so that we are, um, made aware exactly. So, when those numbers, and, and maybe even bringing it back to the town council to discuss that, you know, you got these, um, this is what it's gonna cost us to do both, this is what, um, it's gonna cost a private contract, here's the money that was allocated, and kinda look at it, you know, as, as a group, um, to make some proper decisions, so. Cause the patching versus repaving is a, is a big difference.
So, may I ask this question? Would you prefer that I do all of this and then come back to the council before it goes to the RTM? So that if the council makes a, a further change from this, I haven't gone to the RTM, they've approved X, and then I come back to the council and they say, oh no, we wanna change it to Y? Just so that I understand.
I think it's appropriate, because what if we find out it's actually more money and these numbers are way off? Then we're sending something that might have to be re-sent back, but I, I just think...
I don't see how it would be over this.
Yeah, I don't know.
If anything, it'd be savings.
So I, I think if you, um, would carry our sentiment with you to the RTM and let them know, um, what our thinking was with this, that would be helpful. Um, and I'm sure there are many RTM members that watch our meetings and they can reach out, hopefully they would reach out to us in the meantime, um, and perhaps contact Moderator Eben and just inform her of what's going on. Counsel Parker is here.
But, just one other thing to that. I just think the wording going to the RTM needs to be fully described, that we're, there's nothing finalized, as this is just a motion to increase by five, but the benefit, you know, it needs to be fully worked out because, so they can read that, um, that there's not, no decision has been made as to how this repair is gonna occur, but these are the options that we're looking at, versus just this motion with numbers. I just think for transparency purposes, it would be nice to have all that in the writing just for clarity. Thank you.
Counsel Overy?
Well, all that, all that's going to the RTM is what we recommend, not the before and the after. So what they're gonna get is our recommendation.
That's correct, and then the narrative would be, um, adjusted to match whatever went, went on here, so it has to go through the full council.
I guess my, my thing is, from coming from the RTM like many others, I also watch the meetings and I also print out the things online. So when I'm reviewing what I should be reviewing and doing my due diligence, I see this, and then I see the second form that comes from, to the RTM, and I have no write-up in between to understand sometime. So just clarifying what we're doing is all.
Correct. This, keeping in mind, this is committee of the whole, this has to come through our council. So by the time it gets to council, we should have an idea of what we're going to do, and at that point, we can, um, the council motion will be what goes to the RTM.
That's next Tuesday though, in terms of knowing which way we're going today. Well, by next Tuesday.
Right.
However, I would anticipate we're likely gonna, one way or another, was bid out or done internally, that'd be two new courts, I think, is the direction. But obviously, uh, you know, my preference would be, you know, as long as we're going to new courts, we're kinda got the go-ahead, but if anything changes, if for some reason we think it's better to do a repair, then we come back and get permission.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, Counsel Parker has arrived. Is there anything you wanted to ask about this particular motion?
No.
You're good, okay. So we've all spoken, um, Counsel Overy, we've all spoken on this item. If there's no further discussion, we will vote on the amendment. And, do we want that read again?
Can I read it again?
To recommend, you wanna, yes, you can, you're welcome to read. If you'd like.
I have it right here.
Okay, go for it.
Um, amended motion to recommend a resolution approving the town council to authorize the reappropriation of 25,000 from FYE 2020 CIP 3B replacement sidewalk construction to FYE 2020 CIP 4E park improvement ADA compliance, reducing CIP 3B from 182,000 to 157,000 and increasing CIP 4E from 48,000 to 73,000, and to refer the matter to the RTM. I so move.
Okay, good. So we already moved, so we're just gonna vote on the amendment that Counsel Franco just read. All those in favor? We are at seven counselors. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? So we are at six in favor, one opposed, Zepari, and zero abstentions. So that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover and Mr. Berry. Counsel Overy has a question.
Let's get back down in the seat. I just wanted to thank the town manager and you, Mr. Berry, for making the neighbors much happier down at Shenacosta Golf Club. I know it was just a small item, but it had become a big item, and I, I think whatever it is you're doing now, everybody seems to be very happy with it. So thank you very much for your effort.
You're welcome. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure which issue you're talking about.
Denture's way.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. The porta potty.
Oh, the porta potty, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Yes, oh, that issue.
We heard more about that.
I did get a very thoughtful email on that.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover and Mr. Berry. All right, we are on to item 5C, 2019, 5261, Sustainability and Climate Resilience Manager on page 18. And there is no motion. The staff is looking for guidance this evening as to whether we wish to move ahead at this point. We have received a letter from, that is everyone's place, from the Sustainability, our Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, that everybody has in front of them, it was emailed, it was also left at your desk. We also received an email, um, from a constituent, um, who was opposed to this item, and, um, paraphrasing, he thinks that the work could be done by existing staff and current boards and commissions. So, uh, Mr. Stever, the Chair of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force is here this evening. If you had questions for him, Mr. Reiner is here and Mr. Burt is here. So is there any discussion or questions you would like to ask on the position? Counsel Parker?
I know when we were discussing this before, I had asked for the original job description, and we were just updating it, but we weren't planning on funding this. I didn't think, I read the minutes from, the minutes from the last meeting, when technically someone's still in the position, I thought.
It's, it's a change. It's the, uh, the one position was focused on the sustainability this adds in, now then he was switched, oops, sorry, uh, switched off to the school projects. He's not doing much of this. He's working solar now, a little bit of solar, so he's doing a bit of it, but he's, uh, this would add in the climate resilience and, um, and kind of replace what his position was doing.
But technically, it is his position, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Though, like I said, it's not doing the work, much of the work right now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Counsel Overy?
I couldn't hear what you were saying, John.
There is someone in that position, he's just been diverted to the, Rick Norris diverted to the, mostly to the schools.
Oh, and...
It's not the same exact position, it's, this is altered from there.
Okay, um, does, does he have the kinda background that's necessary for this?
Um, he's gonna be working on the schools, you know, for the next year, year and a half. He is doing a little solar work right now for us, but, um, he would not have the time for, for these duties at this point, unless we pull him off the... And yeah, I, I mean, Rick certainly has a great background.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding. Is this a new position?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I heard you say we should shift it.
Two's asking, the, Rick Norris is in the Sustainability, I forget the title, but it's a Sustainability Project Manager position. Um, he's however been diverted to the school project...
Right.
For the last year, year and a half, and will be until the project's done. So, this adds in the climate resilience piece to it and a lot of other new pieces to the job description, though it is an equal paid, uh, job, but, but, um...
But his main thing would be resilience and subs...
Sustainability.
That would be his main, the person, he or she's main job?
Correct.
Well, is it okay to say something now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I think I mentioned before that I feel that this should be something that can happen in steps. I know it's important and I know we need it, but I'd like this to be a half-time position, perhaps growing into a full-time position in the future. Uh, I don't, one thing that we hear a lot is that we, people do not want, uh, additional positions, or staff, or whatever you wanna call it. And I think it would be better if we could bring somebody in and they could work with the group and keep the avenues of, of communication open between all the other different groups that need to be part of this. But, uh, at this point, I think a, a half-time person could do that.
Counsel Zepari?
I, um, I, I think, you know, I'm a little disturbed that we've had a resiliency and sustainability court, uh, supervisor or coordinator, uh, in the past, and he had so little to do that he became the project manager for the new school. And, uh, then, even then, he wasn't oriented enough to sustainability and resiliency to put solar panels on the roofs of the new schools. Uh, I, I, I agree with, uh, with Leanne.
Oh, he hates to say it.
I do, I do hate to say it.
Counsel Overy.
And, uh, uh, but I, I, I think we should move into this slowly and, and let this person show that there really is something that justifies his full-time and devotion to this, this, uh, project.
Mr. Burt?
Uh, you know, because I knew that one of the considerations was part-time, I had reached out to the COG, Council of Government, to see if somebody wanted this. I, I have serious doubts we'll find someone to fill a part-time job with all these qualifications. Uh, our better hope would be to find a partner who, they work part-time in each town to make one hole, and you know, we'd share a position, the cost on a position. Um, and in terms of solar, that's really a separate project, um, that's really not dictated by, uh, the sustainability person, that's by the Permanent School Building Committee, it's not reimbursable by the state. They made it so the building could accept solar, knowing it would have to be a later project. So I don't want, uh, that position disparaged on that, so.
Thank you. Counsel Baumgartner and then Franco.
I know we've been, uh, discuss, discussing this matter for, uh, the last few weeks, so, um, don't wanna rehash everything I've said previously, but, um, it goes without sa- saying that this position will pay for itself at least tenfold. Um, you know, this person will be the, um, point person on, on, uh, grant acquisition. Um, there's a plethora of grants the town can seek at the state and federal levels, uh, pertaining to resiliency. Um, so, you know, I, I understand that, um, Mr. Norris is, you know, pretty, um, very busy with the school project, um, but it, I think it's incredibly important to have someone with the requisite experiences outlined in our, um, you know, our, uh, job description that, you know, we put together in conjunction with the, um, Sustainability Task Force. Um, so again, I, I stand in strong support of, um, this ordinance, or, I'm sorry, resolution, and, you know, I, I hope we can support it tonight.
Counsel Franco?
So, I have some questions that I, I'm trying to figure some things out about this position. So, it's been stated that this person's position will pay, pay for itself over the course of time by all the grants that they're going to get, but then it, something else had popped up into my head was, is this position really going to be a grant writer as well, as an environmental scientist, basically? Because usually those are two different specialties, I would think, that...
I do, I do anticipate some grant writing and grant management is this position. My biggest concern is if you look, there's a whole lot of duties there, and that's gonna be, I can keep, you could keep this pretty, you know, if you're really committed to wanting to do these things, you can keep more than one person busy full-time to do these things. But, um, but the intent is to have them do grant writing, and it's certainly gonna have to be some of that.
Can, is it possible I ask Mr. Zagami to come up as the HR Director?
Good evening, Bob Zagami, Director of HR and Assistant Town Manager.
So usually, just in hiring practices, do you usually find a grant writer have specialties in other things, or an environmental scientist who's going to help create policies and, and other items around our town also have the capabilities of grant writing?
I think for sure they'd have to, a lot of abilities with grant writing, um, because I think one of the things they'd have to really be doing is a lot of prospecting. That's, uh, and, uh, besides the grant writing, the real trick to grant writing, once you secure a grant, is to make sure that you have the, um, ability to manage it. They have a lot of criteria that, uh, is constant, keeping up with, you know, all regulations, et cetera.
And we, we do have several positions that they do many other things and they write grants and manage grants, so that's very common in the town.
Um, and also, I'm trying to also figure out the part, it's supposed to have a bachelor's degree in environmental science, and then five years of full-time equivalent experience, a master's degree in other field is strongly preferred, but substituted for three years of required experience. So, the question I'm having, and I'm trying to wrap my head around the whole thing, we have a sustainability committee, and I think they're trying to go through all of the items that are in our town, the big pile of, you know, papers that they have, that they're trying to sort through and figure out our direction and what we have already compiled. But then I'm, because this is not my specialty, the science is just not my specialty, would, I'm not exactly sure what this position's going to do, is my problem. And if we could have, like, maybe the sustainability committee go through all these papers and then come back to us and say, this is what we think this position should do, because I'm not sure if it's, there's flooding down on Gravel Street and Mystic, and how is that something that they're going to tackle? Are they tackling just the buildings and, you know, the carbon footprint of the town buildings? Are they concerned about erosion and what we're going to do about our shorelines? I mean, I'm not understanding exactly what they're going to do, and that's why I'm trying to wrap my head around it, because is this the right position, or do we need more engineering people?
Well, in terms of individual street flooding, that's an engineering issue that, that would likely be contracted out or done in-house. Um, you know, the main things are like the sustainability, policy management, grants, those would be the bigger things. And they'll be working closely on the resilience committee for anything else they need. But looking big picture more than, grants and then big picture more than anything else, um, not engineering work.
So, like, so if they're saying there's a problem with something down on Gravel Street, they're gonna pull in the, pull in engineers to say how, what's the solution for this?
Yeah, but they might, this person might consult, say, you know, I've seen, you know, this work at other places, you know, you could work in conjunction, certainly.
So are they just going to say, we know there's flooding here, and then call in other people to figure out what to do about it? This is what I'm not understanding exactly.
You have to have an engineer who's really gonna do the technical details. They can certainly get some ideas and some guidance on what they've seen work, but an engineer has to do an individual road.
No, I, I get the engineer's going to figure the...
Yeah.
But, they're not gonna come up with a solution for what they should be. Like, if there's a lot of flooding, they're not the solution, people are figuring it out, they're just identifying it? Is that, I, I'm not exactly sure what the position does, is what I'm trying to say.
They'll be consulting with, they'll work with each of our departments. Like I said, they may have seen what's worked in other areas and bring that up to the engineer. Have you thought, like that swale we're looking at on Casino Road, you know, that's a good example, thinking out of the box, have you tried, have you thought about doing an asphalt swale that might move the water better? You know, they could ask the engineers if that's possible, and engineers can, you know, could then look at that, so.
Do you have some? I was gonna ask Mr. Stever to come up and maybe he could explain how, how he sees the task force working with a position like that? And he could kind of explain, um, where they're limited and what they can do, cause they're Because they're all volunteers versus how a professional on staff full-time would be able to help them and, and help guide the council with things. So, if you don't mind, please, if you could just introduce yourself. Thank you, sir.
Sal Stever, 81 Main Street, Chair of the Task Force. It's, it's pretty clear to me, having spent the last 10 years working with the community on and off with the whole issue of climate change and resiliency and sustainability, those words have been used interchangeably, that if you're really going to make progress, you're going to have to have a full-time person coordinating these activities among all the department heads. You can take any one of a number of examples. Something like what Counselor Franco has mentioned about flooding along the coastline. That is going to fall into a number of different departments. It's going to have Public Works on one hand, who's going to have to look at the road itself, the infrastructure that's in the road. It also relates to land use planning, which is, my colleague back here, Mr. Reiner is involved with both the planning and the zoning commission. What has been very clear is that there's not been coordination to the level it needs to be across those lines. And if you don't have someone doing this full-time, it's not going to happen. Meetings happen all the time in the town. It's, as you already know, difficult to keep up with all the meetings that are going on. A part-time person, some people would not be able to do that. Because essentially, you're going to have them working full-time and they're not going to accept that. The other observation is that there are very few people around who would be willing to do this part-time. You've got a skill set that is quite broad. I mean, myself is trained, trained in ecology, done water resources. And I've also been a project manager and a grant writer. All of those things going on at the same time and you have to multitask those things and get it done. And what you'd expect of a person like us to do is, okay, so you get a $300,000 grant on some particular function that relates to sustainability. For example, what could Groton do to better protect the shoreline? For, from, from sea level rise and from major disasters. If you get that kind of a grant, it's going to take a person a great deal of time to make sure that that money gets spent well. So that the end up, the end, end product for the town will really work for the town. What's happened with that big stack of papers that I showed you several weeks ago is that while we do these studies by outside contractors and they come in and they say, here's what you do, many of those things are not followed up on. Now, some of them are clearly, but many of them aren't. And this person would be expected to make sure that there is the follow-up. To, to make sure there is a program going forward that really makes us a more sustainable community, makes us more resilient to the effects of climate change on the community. Now hopefully that, that maybe explains a little bit about what you're, what you're about. Now, if you really don't want to do this, that's another thing. Then you, you're going to miss all kinds of opportunities. The people who are doing this in the state that are making progress do have full-time people. They're going after the grants, they're out there, they need to be captured. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, specific questions you have. But it's, it's pretty clear to me that if you're serious, you're going to have to do this. If you have other ideas about how to do it, you're going to have some real problems. The fact of the matter is, we've got a great task force, but we don't have the authority to contract or to write grants on behalf of the town. That's not our responsibility. That is fundamentally a town responsibility. They have to do the audits, they have to carry out all these kinds of activities that we're simply incapable of doing on behalf of the town. I mean, the reality is, when we got that $297,000 grant during the last task force, I personally wrote that. I had to then give it to Rick Norris to submit it on behalf of the town. And that took a huge amount of my time. And then it got, it got complicated because it turned out that the Department of Energy didn't have the, the population right about our town and they said we couldn't get as much money. Well, it turns out that we did have the population right. So we had to appeal, we had to appeal to the Department of Energy, make a formal appeal. And that's again, something that a, a task force can't do on behalf of the town. That really requires the town attorney to do that sort of thing in conjunction with the town manager and so forth. For those, just some examples of the kinds of things that, that are going on. I mean, just today in the paper, you saw this discussion about the Navy and whether the housing and transportation is adequate. Having someone really look at that as relates to sustainability is really crucial going forward. And there's an example of that right today in the paper.
I just wanted to kind of bring up the fact about looking at the part-timer versus the full-timer. Looking at the education background that we're looking at here, it's, it's phenomenal what somebody would have to spend on their education. I don't envision somebody coming in part-time and all of a sudden being able to support themselves, you know, till I, well, I prove myself three years later or something like that that we turn to a full-time position. As we, John and myself, did quite a bit of research. And as we researched from Boston to California, these jobs were so different. Everybody had their own ideas of how they do things. We didn't see any real cookie cutter type situation where this is exactly what we want. I think you get, you basically get your, your job description down to where you think it should be. And then I think whoever we choose to bring in that we really think has got the right stuff that should jump off the table when we look at their resumes, that's probably the one we want to say, okay, let's hear it. And that's probably the direction we want. We want somebody to come in and take charge when they're doing these things too. I don't think it's just us say, okay, let's, this is how I want you to do it. We want the experts to come in and tell us how to do some of these things. I, I think that would be prudent. And even if it meant that we had to have somewhat more specialty than the HR department or the managers, directors, et cetera, to interview, you know, the council, whoever felt they had the greatest amount of expertise in this. That's, that's where I think we'd really work on getting the right person. But if you look across the board, everybody across the country was looking at somebody different and different ideas.
Let me just follow up on, on the issue of looking across the country. For example, if you're going to hire somebody to be a sustainable, sustainability and resiliency coordinator in California, that person better have some real hard experience with fires. That's not the case here in Groton. If you're in Utah, the person you want to have out there is going to have to have a tremendous background in drought and in water supply systems. Because that's the issue. They have drought and they have these water supply problems that we don't have here. We have hurricanes. They don't have hurricanes in Utah. So it depends upon, very much upon the location of the community of the kind of person you're going to get. For example, if you go to South Carolina and you're in the low areas, it's all about flooding. All about flooding. Here, we're very fortunate. A lot of our land is well above sea level and, and that makes us already in a very competitive position with other communities that are even along our own connect coast that are, that are much closer to, to the level of the ocean floor than, than we are here. So it really is something that does relate to the particular location. It also has to do with how the communities are set up within the state.
Okay, we have several counselors that wish to speak. So we have Boardelon, I wish to speak, and Counselor Parker, and Counselor Zepari.
Thank you. So, I mean, I hear what Counselor Zepari is saying and Counselor O'Gree as well as Counselor Franco and Counselor Baumgartner. I guess I just, looking at this, the person that's in the current position is currently not doing this part of the position. They were allocated to do something else. That's the, that's the understanding.
Right. They're also not being funded out of the general fund any longer. They're just on the school fund.
Right. And so, okay, on the school fund, right. So it's not likely to be rehiring that type of position again. Once that position, let's just say, vacates, but it wouldn't be something that we'd re-initiate.
Right.
So I guess the, you know, the onus comes back on the town also, the way that I see it. If this position was once allocated and not properly utilized, I guess we can write all the job descriptions we want. The onus comes on the town on how important it is that we want this person to be in the position. And it also needs to be written in some way, if this is something that we are going to allocate, that the town is using that person in that position so the same thing doesn't happen again. Once again, I'm not saying that to be rude or disrespectful to anybody. And a lot of the people that were involved in this aren't sitting here or were not the town manager at the time. But if we're going to allocate something like this into a position where we're going to use it to benefit the town in the, in the form in which it's written here, then we have to truly stick to that. And so the concern about moving something like that is, what happens next when someone else decides to, oh, we'll, we'll put this person here? At one point, there was, do we currently have a grant writer for the town of Groton?
No.
No. And that was an open position at one time I had saw, correct?
Yeah, and they dropped it.
Right. So, looking at this, we, we lack a, a grant writer as a whole for the town, I feel. So that's another missing link, I think. I mean, having a strong grant writer is, there, there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a art to being able to write grants and knowing how to seek them. That, that's a whole nother resume. I mean, you could have an amazing sustainable and resilience manager, but maybe a little weak in grant writing versus having a strong grant writer in our town. And I feel we should really be looking at also making sure we have a strong grant writer in our town to help us offset the upcoming costs. That position is, is, I feel, very valid. So that's another concern, just piecing all this in. Looking at this, I, I heard Counselor Franco state, well, what is this person going to be doing? And looking at this, I mean, like I said, as I did my own research, as you guys stated that you had done, looking around, there was no cookie cutter explanation. I saw things from with public health background written in there. I saw some towns out west that had sustainability and resilient manager that also had an engineering background, as Counselor Franco had stated. So that they're actually part of that. I, I'd also stated at another town council meeting where we have a public works position that has been vacated that may not be an engineer, but we probably should be looking to replace the wording on that and look towards, you know, having some of that background knowledge in there. So those are the things that I would like to see. I would like to see a little bit more of an engineer versus just more of a paper pushing side of this position with the exposure where this person has the, the, the ground knowledge of the engineering concerns of sustainability and resilience. But also comes with the clerical aspects to be able to, you know, support, hopefully we'll get a grant writer for the town, but support the grant writer and also be able to work on the things, like you said, the road is flooding down and they can see from a structural side, so that we're not contracting out constantly for those types of things, because that's going to become more and more frequent. So looking at that, that, that public works position is a key piece to this, I feel. And we're in the position now where we haven't hired and I understand that there's a lack thereof. But where's the onus that we're going to keep long before we're even gone? Not source this person back out to go do school buildings or... And that's, that's what we really should talk about, you know what I mean, as a town council? And what can we put in the writing to protect that? Long after we're not here, what can we put in the writing to make sure that this person, if we allocate or so choose to, that they're going to be, we need a town manager to run the town, where is that going to stay? So that someone can't just come in and cut that again? Because if we put this here, I'm not guaranteed to be here in two years and neither, none of us are. But how do we keep that moving forward? So those are the questions that kind of come to mind. And I think this is something that needs to be moved and, and is very important to this town. But I don't want to rush also in, in the writing here. I think, I'm not discrediting, discredit, dis, trying to undermine the people who wrote this. I think it's substantial and they did a great job. But I think that maybe there's some time that we, I think the council may need to talk more openly on the dialect of this a little bit further. Possibly even a council caucus to even further discuss this in detail as to how detailed we want this to be. I know that, you know, everyone's been working really hard on it. It's hard to do this in this kind of platform to have a strong write-up, you know what I mean? We can't even respond to each other emails because that's a meeting. So it would be nice to have the platform in which we could probably openly discuss this and, and maybe look at this a little further. I'm not saying extend it too far out, but I'm thinking, I think there's a lot of questions still here. And that's what I'm hearing. And it's not a matter of do we want it, it's making sure that, that position's going to stay.
Okay, so we have other counselors that wish to speak, but Mr. Burke and Mr. Stever wanted to respond.
There's, I don't think there's any way to guarantee it'll stay the same. Any council can change a job description and pull them in different duties. Now, if you're looking at an environmental engineer, that's a totally different position. I think you'd severely restrict who you'd get. Firstly, that's up to pay over this. I don't think, these are really two separate positions. So you're looking at a grant writer position and an environmental engineering position and then this position. So you're really talking three different positions.
Right. But if we, but if we had a, a town grant writer that was strong, a grant writer would have the support of the resilience and sustainability person to tell them the direction and that grant writer for the town would be helping all departments of the town, which we currently do not have.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying that's an extra position.
Yeah. No, it's, it's needed.
Mr. Stever, you wanted to respond?
Your point's well taken, Counselor. The reason this time when this came up, and it came up because you all brought it up, and the recommendation was that this person be assigned directly to work under the town manager, was exactly what the problem was that you, you talked about. It was bounced between planning and Director of Public Works, Director of Plan and Public Works, back and forth and then got sucked off onto the school program. We hope that with a manager, a strong manager, which we have, this provides stability for that position. Now, with regard to grant writing, while there is some boilerplate, certainly in federal grants, going from grant writing in something like public health, NIH kind of stuff, to energy, to EPA, to NOAA, they're very different styles. And part of what you're talking about is having a person who's got enough technical background in those areas. And I think the kind of person we're looking for would have that. But the second part of that is, so once you get the grant, you gotta be able to deliver on the product. And this person ought to be able to do that. And this person is not likely to be able to deliver effectively on, for example, a library grant. That's not their expertise. But there is a expertise that is growing up in the country on sustainability and on resiliency. I just spent yesterday down at Yale University where they have a master's degree, a program, that is really all centered around this thing. So there are those kinds of people out there, they're being trained to do this sort of thing. So I think it's important that you, you, you think that, think about this. Because, and if you need to take more time to do this, that's fine. We're available to talk about this to, to some, some, some great length. What we need to do is avoid our mistakes of the past and we've got a new environment problem ahead of us. It is probably the single biggest problem that we face over the next 50 years.
Counselor Parker and then Zepari.
So, I'm looking at the background and the town council opt to move forward with a new position closer to dedicated resilience and sustainability position on August 27th. I thought we were just taking a look at the job description. So if I'm wrong, I'll take that. But I didn't think we were going to do anything until after the person retired technically from the position to move forward. Because technically, his, his title, well, when he was hired on for that job, Rick Norris is in that position. So us changing it to become a manager, I don't think that's at work technically. As a HR person, I'm looking at the HR, Mr. Zagami right now.
Okay.
Even though he is not currently in the position, technically his title's there. No money's coming out of that account for him. It's a zero balance. But that position title is his until he retires. So we can do anything until he retired, putting somebody in the position of resilience.
Not necessarily. We could always change anything we want really with positions. There's no contracts here that, that would prohibit that. I just want to go back to one thing you had said before. And when we'd said, we, just to clarify, when we did talk about going across the nation, we were looking for that education, not looking for a fire jumper from California to come out here. But make no mistake, this is New England. We've had the blizzards, we've had high population and I think tornadoes we've had now. We do get hurricanes, you know, these are all cyclical, but, you know, we've got... We do get hurricanes, you know, these are all cyclical, but, you know, we've got something now with climate change, and we're going to be experiencing climate change. We don't know if we're going to have dry forests or what. I, you know, I don't know what exactly we're going to have. But what I'm just saying on this, that we need somebody with those skills, the same does share it across the country, so that they can make some of these assessments and kind of tell us what to do.
My question is, with him being in that position, even though we changed it to the word talitaal manager, I know you're saying there's no contract or anything, but can we do that?
Yes, we can. For instance, and this is a much altered job description from that, besides, but you look, we have multiple maintainer positions, you can have multiple of the same position. So you could have it identical and have two people. And, you know, all we're here is to present the job description, it's up to the council on timing or anything else, you know, that's up to you for policy, but it can be done, whichever way you want to do it.
But Counselor Parker, I just want one more thing to babble a little more, I guess. I hear a lot of babbling, so I get to babble once, all right? But anyways, what I'm really talking about here is the fact that that job, we, when that job was put in sustainability, I don't think there was any real education behind it or, you know, what did they get out of it? It seems to me the biggest deal they ever did was really change the light bulbs here. I'll say light bulbs because I can't do anything, so I just know that somehow the light bulbs got changed to be more efficient and things like that. And we call that sustainability.
I'm going to cut you off there, Bob. I did send a list to the council of things that Rick Norris did accomplish, you know, things like the electric vehicle chargers, you know, us getting so much of vehicles, he did the grants on that. He did do a variety of things, and it was more of a between the town manager and council on changing the direction of where that position was going. So he was doing what he was supposed to and got directed into other things, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't want to make it like he's not doing anything, it's just, that was a big, those were big projects.
Clearly, our report to the council suggested that we've actually done a great deal in this community. I mean, it's not to say that we haven't. The question is, what do we do going forward?
Counselor Parker, did you have a follow-up?
I did. My question is, and a couple of people have said it, that this will pay off in the long run. My concern is, as health benefits, everything else rises, salaries will rise, and where is the cost savings? Grants are not going to cover that person's position, not all the time, because there's a limit on it. Federal government has a limit on how long you can have a person in a position, two to three years, one to three, actually. And how soon will we be thinking of establishing this without having a budget-lined item?
Mr. Burt.
Well, in terms of timing, it's completely up to the council, so I'll stay out of that one. But in terms of, honestly, I was just asked to do the job description, and I do think this is the best job description if that's the direction you want to do, go. But in terms of the payoff, I agree totally with the, you know, there's very limited in terms of personnel dollars in most of these grants, you know. I think, I think where the payoff talk is, is as these, as the climate change happens, as sea levels rise, you have increased CIP dollars. I think the goal is to, instead of spending money out of the general fund towards CIPs, is to hope to get those other dollars out there to do CIPs. I think that's really.
Well, let me give you a very concrete example. Okay, so there's a grant, and I'm going to give you a hypothetical. We can get a grant to put in a new building, let's say to replace this particular building. And if the grant is to put together a net zero energy building, what that would mean in terms of payoff to the community is that you wouldn't be paying for utility bills than here on this revised new building. And so if you were saving, let's say, $200,000 or $300,000 a year in just one building, one project, you are making that money available to the, to the community by, by being energy efficient. And it's those are the kinds of activities.
That does not relate to personnel?
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't. You can do an energy-efficient building. It'll save us in the long run. There's rising costs, cost of living, benefits, everything goes up. So when things go up, taxes go up. So it wears the cost savings for the town down the line. If it's a building, yeah, they're going to save on that end, but they're going to, it's going to go up on another end. It's got to balance out somehow.
Did you have a follow-up?
I'm done.
Okay, so we have a bunch of people that want to talk. So, Zepary, Aubrey, Wardlon, I haven't spoken yet, so I'm jumping in here somewhere before other people get to talk again. So, Zepary.
In your, in your discussions with other communities that have a resiliency and sustainability manager, does that manager also have a secretary or any kind of a support staff?
I can't say that I've spent a lot of time with a lot of other, because there are very few communities that actually have this sort of position. But my understanding is that these people tend to have a full set of skills and they do their own secretarial work. I mean, the last time I saw a secretary myself in government was a very long time ago. And so you're talking about probably making a car available to this person, and that's about it.
And we know how Mr. Burt feels about town cars, so.
Yeah, I guarantee you, I won't be back asking for, and again, I'm just presenting the job description, but in terms of an administrative assistant, I would not be asking for that. I'm sure we can find, this position would be housed over in the, you know, in public works planning in this building, and I'm sure we could tap into personnel that exists as well as in my office.
We wouldn't expect to be, be raising this $80,000 salary for this person by another $50,000 or $100,000 for one or two support people.
No.
Because it sounds like he's going to be pushing an awful lot of paper.
Okay, Counselor Aubrey?
Well, that was kind of the same thing. My concern is, not necessarily concern, but when we look at this, I don't know anybody in this town that works without a staff, which is not set up that way. Everybody, every proffinad has somebody that's under them to help. And to say that we're going to have planning, give some of them time, I think it's reading props. I don't think that's a reality.
I can guarantee you, I'm not coming back to ask for a staff person for this person.
What's that?
I wouldn't ask for a staff person for this person. We would make it work. There'll be enough staff time out there.
I might be interested, that's good.
Well, what Julia was saying, I think you're just not thinking that thing through because if I understand what you said, if you've got a grant to build a building, was it to build the building that was energy efficient?
Yeah, supposing there is a grant available to, and it's determined that, this is hypothetical.
Yeah, I understand.
The building is, doesn't meet your needs any longer, and you have an opportunity to get a grant to put together a net energy, zero energy building, and you put it together and all of a sudden you no longer have to pay for electricity coming into that building. And that other building, the old one you took down, was on, and I'm just doing it hypothetically, was a $200,000 electric bill, and now you don't have to have that? You have saved money for the community.
I understand what you were saying. I understand, I just wanted to clarify that the first step was a grant to try to build the building, and then the building would be energy efficient, which would be an additional savings. Wouldn't pay for the building, and that we save on the electric, which means we would put more money back into the town. We would not be spending, we would not be building the building, and we would not be paying the electric, we're paying on the building now, so it would be a cost savings, a substantial cost savings. I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. But I, I think that, I don't know where we go from this, because I think there's an awful lot of open-ended things on this. I still feel it has to start in steps. I wish I could feel differently about, and I, because I do understand its importance, but I also understand that, you know, we've been dictated some things to go by in our position, and one of the biggest outcries is no more positions. So maybe if we could come into it in steps, people could see the value of it, then it would be easier to go forward. Maybe, maybe we have a bad taste in our mouth because we had this person before, and that person was able to drift off to other things. I never approved of that when it was happening, but I wasn't in a position like I am now. You know, you know, Nick, Rick has done just all kinds of things. You never know where you're going to find him. And I think that maybe that's gotten a bit of taste in, like it has for me. So I would feel much more comfortable with working a little bit more on this job description. And again, I could be wrong too, but I think there's a lot of people out there that their family situations dictate part-time jobs, you know, and maybe it's a young family, and the father works part-time and the mother works full-time or vice versa. There are people out there that are looking for part-time positions in this kind of a level. So I just, I'm only comfortable with, with the first step.
Okay, I'm going to jump in. So, I am in favor of taking on a sustainability and climate resilience manager for the town of Groton. I have heard concerns, said that they thought that this job description was too detailed and that it would, it would limit us in what we could do with all the bullet points that we have here. The minimum qualifications here do take into account all the different things that we've talked about. They take into account urban planning and public administration, sustainability, engineering. And whether, what this is saying is the preferred is a master's degree, and to have someone with a master's degree just being able to repay their student loans, that they're not going to be wanting to work in part-time, they're going to be wanting to work full-time in order just to do that and still to have, you know, to be able to function and to live. So I think, I think we do need it full-time. What Counselor Aubrey was saying about the existing situation, I agree, none of us were in a position to make those decisions, and it is perhaps why some of us have negative feelings about things. But I think that should not stand in our way of moving forward and trying to do the right thing, which is to create this position that would address the concerns that I believe we all have, the concerns that we may not be ready to move forward with it now, but I think most people have the concerns that we are going to be dealing with some serious issues in this town regarding resilience. And I would prefer to address them now and get the ball rolling. I almost feel like we're behind, we lost time with the reassignment of the person in the other position to the school building project, which is a very important project. But then the emphasis on that task then took them away from what the original position was. I feel so strongly that we need someone dedicated to this area, reporting directly to the manager, to take on all of these tasks that are so vital, and to staff our task force, to staff our boards and commissions, and to really oversee everything that's going on in the town as far as looking at it through the filter of sustainability and resilience. And I said this, last time we talked about this, that there used to be a line in every single CIP in the budget that was, how does this item, or how is it going to be impacted for future sustainability and resilience? We need to do that again. Everything we're doing, we need to be looking at through that filter. And I don't think we can afford to, to wait. As far as the whole grant writing thing, you need, I agree with what Mr. Stever was saying earlier, the person that can write grants for the library is not necessarily the person that could write these highly technical grants for, for scientific and engineering fields. So you need someone with a specific skill set to be able to write that type of grant to make it work. Let's see, I had so many things I was writing as everybody was talking. And I do agree.
We'll just be quiet in the future.
No, I just, I just got to write faster. And I do think that the question, I recognize Counselor Parker's concerns with the salary and the benefits. And I, I think that we need to recognize that if we want the right person for this job to do a good job for the town of Groton, then we're going to have to pay a salary and we're going to have to pay benefits to get the right person in here. And I understand the concerns of increasing the budget, but this is $80,000 overall. We're just spending 55 on two basketball courts. And this item could have such a bigger impact on the future of the town than that, so that's my babbling on it. We are back to Counselor Wardlon.
Thank you. I hear what Counselor Aubrey is saying in regards to, you know, maybe there is a part-time, I mean, we're, we're, we keep stating the master's degree and their financial burden, but there could be a person who's, you know, pretty much retired, you know, at 60-something years old, some people are from the state, and might want a part-time position that would be a good introduction, and be willing to take it on, that has all this experience that's more seasoned. Honestly, I think a seasoned person, part-time, is a great start if that's where we had to go. I think, like you said, as you had stated, Counselor Aubrey, that there, there is a need for that type of work. People are on fixed incomes and semi-retired, and a part-time job is something they'd be willing to commit to. So it's not something out of the ballpark. In regards to the cost, as Mayor Granitowsky stated, it's only $80,055 for basketball courts. It's not just $80,000 because it's also all the medical benefits, as I think Counselor Parker was trying, I believe she was saying, I don't want to speak for her, but that is an expense. But the cost is the quality of life and the health benefit for the town, and that's a cost that you're not going to see in numbers. It's a benefit as a whole to have somebody researching that. As I look around this town even today, you look at the senior center, beautiful building, nothing about it is sustainable. If there was a major hurricane or anything like that, that can even be really a shelter, has no alternatives whatsoever. That was built long before I was involved in politics, but once again, there it stands, and it's a wonderful place to go to, but it has nothing sustainable really about it. Our schools that are coming on the pipeline, barely anything is sustainable there either. But yet our sustainable school buildings manager is part of those. So I guess I'm concerned as to where that line draws. He's, he's in charge of the buildings, as we stated, that we already have somebody in the position, but the sustainability aspect, we need somebody who's looking and is part of all of these meetings before we turn the buildings over to the school. I mean, it was brought to my attention that a few of the schools won't even have functioning real kitchens or washable stations. I don't remember exactly the second, I think it might be the elementary ones that are coming on, the floor plans don't even have that, as we stare down the barrel of trying to get rid of plastics and styrofoam. And yet we have no place to even do that in the elementary schools. So who's making the plans and how are we looking at this? I think it's important. I think the cost comes down the pipeline as far as our health, making sure that we're living in a sustainable manner and trying our best to live kind of more carbon neutral and that, that's my thought process of it. But how we get there, I think there's still some work to be done based on that, so.
So, Mr. Manager, what I would like to suggest, and if it's okay with the rest of the council, we have, we're down two councillors. We have a new member coming on in a week or so, and I would like to hold off and continue this at our January COW. I know we're adding things on there. But that would give everybody a chance to continue discussion. I do think we need to have the discussion publicly.
January or December?
I thought you said the December COW was booked.
Yeah, December's very busy, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Right now, the only thing we have for January is we have a CAFER presentation at the first meeting.
So the rationale is because we're down two councillors, by that time then we'll have them back, we'll have the full new council on, everybody can have a chance to kind of process questions, and we could have more discussion, a more in-depth discussion, as Counselor Wardlon recommended. So is that acceptable to the rest of the council to hold off on this until, until January?
I think so.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Is it largely due to the fact that we're kind of unable to find a consensus right now, the delay?
I think so. It seems like we're kind of deadlocked in, there was the indication that they wanted, some of the councillors wanted more discussion, and I would prefer to have the, all the voices heard before we make a decision, and we're, like I said, we're down two people, so I would like to give Counselor-elect Melendez and Counselor Heath a chance to weigh in on this as well.
Well, just from my perspective, I'm not sure how much more can be discussed. I think we've really discussed this topic ad nauseam, and I think at this point, you know, if people are comfortable voting on it, that we move forward and do so, but it's okay.
Well, we don't have a resolution, so we would need direction then. The staff is seeking direction from us, so if you'd like to suggest a direct- The staff is seeking direction from us, so if you'd like to suggest a direction, then we could hear if everyone else is comfortable with that.
But nothing would preclude any one of us from making a motion tonight to passing this, correct?
No, I don't, no, that's fine. Is there any, anybody else wanna chime in on holding off or going forward? Councilors Zepari and Bordelain?
I was just wondering, if FEMA has any recommendations for sustainability and resilience for towns to adopt?
As far as personnel?
No, as far as what do you, how do you prepare for a hurricane? What do you need to have to, for your people in the time of a hurricane? How do you prepare for some kind of nuclear meltdown at Millstone?
Take a bottle or go in the basement.
What should we be doing? There were a lot of comments made today that just made me think about, for instance, a hurricane. And I think it was you, the Councilor Bordelain, who, who talked about not having a kitchen in the schools. The schools should be secondary shelters for people displaced via a hurricane. We should have plans of what we're gonna do with the population in the kind of emergencies that we're likely to see, or even possibly might see. And I think FEMA may already have done that for us.
So, Mr. Burt?
Yeah, that's what our emergency manager does in the police department. Every town's required to have a hazard mitigation plan, there's planning, there's plans in place for all those different things. And sometimes we're sure we could have Lieutenant B come and, you know, kinda do an overview of what he does and update the council.
Just, just so you know, I think when I was here last, briefing you on what we were up to, we will be meeting with the Chief of Police, who is our emergency manager, manager for the community. That was a decision that was made by, by the council some time ago to not fill the emergency management position and to transfer to the police department, or to the police chief. And so we'll be meeting with him to, to really understand more fully what, what is in place and what needs to be done. And there's an example of part of what, what the task force is doing on your behalf.
Councilor Bordelain?
So, holding this off and not making a motion or to move this tonight, moving it to January, what would that mean as far as, it's in a new, new year and all of that? Does that change anything as far as the progress we're, we're going through?
Same fiscal year, but...
The one reason I like it is I'll start having a little bit more knowledge about the new budget, not all the way formed, but I might start getting more of an impression of where we're at, you know, makes me more comfortable.
So, so by doing that, we lose nothing else, other than maybe six or seven weeks, but we can gain more time to see. But in the meantime, can feelers be put out that this position's coming down the pipeline at all? I know at my job, for example, we're, you know, when we're thinking about changing or creating a position, it's not a full job post with benefits, but we can say, we're anticipating a position, this is what it looks like, and people can start to drop names. Is there, is there a pipeline for, for that in a town setting?
I'm not sure if that's something that the town could do. It has to be like a formal posting, doesn't it?
Like, my company will put feelers out, like, we might know that we're gonna be, we're seeing an influx, we wanna bring in anesthesiologists or nurses, and they can do postings where they will say that we're anticipating these positions opening in January, here's basically what we are roughly looking for, it's not set in stone. But I'm just thinking that would cut down on the delay to kinda just put out there that we are looking to possibly hire this type of position. And there's platforms out there, I'm not sure if it's done in the town sector, but I'm just saying it's a way of not, it's a way of doing something while we're not doing anything for those six or seven weeks. It's, and people do, headhunters look for those things and start to see, you know, like, wow, Groton's moving towards a sustainability position, so, just something to think about.
Councilor Franco?
I'm good with waiting, but I do want, during this time period, if it's possible. Last time I had brought up that the city had a sustainability position, and you had, you had discussed...
Yeah, it is that, right?
Was it, was it grant, is that what it was?
It's a grant that's being run by Dennis, the planner, the city planner.
It's a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Service.
Oh, so that's what it was, okay. And so you've reached out to the COG, and you haven't heard anything back yet?
Yes, however, it was pointed out at the last meeting, we have a few new COG members, so I'm gonna reach out again, especially with Stonington.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say Stonington.
Yeah, that's, I've got that in my notes right now.
Yeah, and then, so my, while you're here, Zell, may I ask you, would it benefit, would it, what would be the pros and cons of us working with other, like, local towns that surround us on the same topic? Would that, like...
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
What would be the pros and cons if we went in, like, together, like, if Stonington wanted to have somebody in this position and us as well? Is there, what is the, what are the pros and cons to that?
I think management of a person's time becomes more problematic. You just multiply, think of how many things you have here going on, and then you have to have this person doing the same thing in Stonington, or in London, or in Legerd. It becomes an extremely difficult task for, for anybody to do that. And I know, know of the community where they are doing that.
Would COG, by any chance, fund something for a regional position?
Well, I threw that, I, they don't appear to, but, you know, they reached out to their members to see if anyone else wanted a partner. I will say, a couple people forwarded me an article today, I think it was on Massachusetts, and John had, was one of the ones that forwarded it, but there is a group of very small towns that went together on a position. So it has been done, was that Massachusetts, I believe? Yeah, yeah. By the way, just to answer, because of a comment earlier, I did verify that all the new schools do have full-service kitchens. It's not the new ones, it's existing schools that have an issue.
Kolnaskian Northeast.
Oh, I meant new, meaning newer in the last time.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They exist.
But the ones we are doing, just to make clear to everybody.
Just, if I may, frankly, I think the, I haven't discussed this with the task force, but my general feeling is in conversations, I think we would feel probably more comfortable when you feel comfortable about this. But sort of leaving it, until you digest the information, understand where you wanna go, that would be the best, best way to, to go forward. When you come together and feel you've got an approach, then I think that would work best for, for everybody. I think putting out feelers, trying to deal with part-time, full-time, this is way too loosey-goosey to be able to respond to by anybody who's in the job market at this point in time. I mean, there are some very sophisticated people out there who would probably love this job, but I think it needs to be, you all need to feel comfortable with it before you go forward. So a delay would, might be a, a way of doing that.
So, does anyone have an issue with waiting until January? No? Okay, so then, Mr. Burt, can we hold off and then save this for January? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Seaver, thank you, Mr. Zagami. So we have 2019-326-2. Don't read, it's cross-styled. It's an ad and planning director. Councilor Obray, please.
I hereby move for the members of the Town Council Committee of the whole, Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Bob, and Planning Director John Reina, go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-2006D to discuss the selection of a site or the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate as publicly regarding such sites, lease, sale, or purchase. Acquired are all proceedings or transactions concerning same have been terminated or abandoned. Doesn't make sense, but I so move.
Moved by Obray and seconded by Bordelain. All those in favor of going into executive session as per the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are in executive session at 8:31.